Hello, my name is Lindsay Dobrinsky and I'm the President of the East Brunswick PTA Presidents Council, and your host for the 2017 East Brunswick Board of Education Candidate Profiles. This November, five candidates will be running for three open seats on the Board of Education. The candidates are Todd Simmons, Lori Lacks, Susannah Chu, Jean Rieger, and John Gonzalez. We will be right back to speak with our first candidate. Joining me now is Lori Lacks. Good evening Lori, how are you?
Good Lindsay, how you doing?
Very well, thank you. Let's begin tonight with you telling us a little bit about yourself. Give us some background with regard to your family, your education, your children, and how long you've been a resident of East Brunswick?
Sure, I'm a proud member of the class of 1988 from East Brunswick High School. Both my husband and I grew up in town and we decided to raise our children here. We have two children, one in Memorial and one in Hammershold, both enjoying the same wonderful education that we did. One of the reasons that I decided to run for the Board of Education was because I felt that I got an excellent education way back when. And I'll be honest with you, I think it's actually better than when I went to school. We could talk more about that later, but there's a lot more programs that were offered. I'm currently home with my children, but I'm very active in town. Both my husband and I do a lot of work on different civic, athletic, educational organizations, and are just all around community people. We really love East Brunswick.
And can you tell us why you decided to run for reelection again?
Again, I have like a broken record. You know, as I said, I love this town. I was a fortunate recipient of a lot of great programs. When I went to school, I was an honors and AP student, and it opened a lot of doors for me going on to higher education. And one of the reasons that I got on the Board of Education was I felt that I had seen a very good side of the school district. But I was also concerned about some of the students in the middle and some of the students on, you know, the lower end of the academic ladder. So, many years ago, I ran for the Board of Education, hoping to become a voice for a lot of these people. And it's been a great time on the Board. I felt I've accomplished a lot. I've truly enjoyed working, especially with this group and this superintendent. And I feel as though I add value to the Board. So, I decided to put my hat in the ring once again.
Well, that leads us to my next question. With regard to some of the personal skills and specific talents that you think you have, that you bring as an asset to the Board?
Sure. So, very cliche, but I am a team player. When you have nine members of a Board working together to try and come up with solutions or answers, you really have to be a consensus builder, because again, you have nine points of view. One of the things that makes the Board so good for this town is that you do have nine individuals. You're not dealing with people that come with their own views or their own agendas. You have nine individuals working together. So, I've always been someone that likes to work as a team. I was an athlete when I was younger. And that teaches you how to work with other people. And I feel that I bring a calming sense to the Board, willing to hear both sides. I think before I act. And I also feel I'm a good listener. And one of the benefits that I feel that I bring is not just the fact that we're all trying to do the best we can for the kids, for the staff, for the people of this town. But I find sometimes some of my most cherished achievements are just helping somebody, an individual. And I've had times over the years where people have come to me with questions. It's just about the bureaucracy, how to get through the school district. What can I do to help this particular child? And I felt that I've been a very good advocate for those families. And that's been something that means a lot to me. There's a lot of things we do as a Board, but as an individual, I feel like I've truly been there for the people that have reached out to me. And that includes strangers. I've actually, believe it or not, I've gotten phone calls at home or emails from people that I've never met that just said, "I'd like to ask for your help in this. You know, can you tell me where to turn to? Can you tell me how to approach this problem?" You know, and I've tried to be an advocate for the people I know and the people I don't.
That's wonderful. Now, to the tough question. If you were to give the district as a whole a grade on a report card, what things would receive the best marks and why?
Well, I'm gonna say we're an A-plus district, because we are a blue ribbon district. Our staff is phenomenal. Our staff is at the heart of the true success of this district. And you can see that when you walk into any of our 11 buildings. They are the heart and soul. These people take our children and they mold them into better human beings. And I've always said this, it's not just the academics. I go to community events, I've gone to private events, and you will see the staff truly immersed in the community. They care about these kids. It's not just a nine-to-five, a seven-to-two job for them. It's something that they truly believe in, bettering these children. And the staff today has it a lot differently than when you and I run school, because when you and I run school, as much as I felt the teachers cared about us, I think what's happened now is you're trying to create better people. We're looking at the kids and we're saying, "How do we make you not just educated, but how do we make you kinder, gentler? How do we make you more tolerant?" And in today's world, I think that's so important that these children are growing up realizing that the person next to them doesn't look like them, doesn't think like them, doesn't pray like them. But the reality is, we're all the same. And, you know, and even with our special education students, which has always been something near and dear to my heart, I've always felt that these kids being mainstreamed and the children learning, that just because they think differently than you doesn't mean they are different than you. And I think that that's something that this district does very, very well. You know, we're cutting edge, I mean, all the things that you would expect, we're cutting edge. Our technology, we're working to keep up with that. The academics are stellar, our athletics, the arts, all of the things that you would think would make the district an A-plus district, we absolutely do. But to me, that's kind of what gives us that little edge.
And something that you think needs work that might not receive the A-plus grade, in your opinion?
In my perfect district? Well, that's the thing. There's always things that need work. We're constantly looking to find ways to better the educational process. The biggest thing for me that I wish, and this is a funding issue, are facilities. I wish that we could do more for some of our buildings. We've got aging buildings, there's buildings that you and I both attended years ago that aren't much different than we went there. And unfortunately, that's a budget issue, more so than anything else, but that's probably where I would say that the district could use a little bit of a makeover.
Agreed. And then, if you were to focus on the budget and you know you have to make some tough cuts, where in your opinion would you make those cuts and why?
So personally, I'm not a big fan of cutting. I prefer to look at different ways to fill in the budget deficits. Because obviously, we have an educational responsibility to the children of the district, but we have a financial responsibility to the taxpayers. So, one of the things that we always try and do, and I pride myself on, is balancing those two. You know, and it's very easy to say, "Sure, we should cut." Personally, I like to look at things where we have an enterprise, our community programs program. We offer enrichment programs. We offer a preschool program that's parent-funded. And it's at a very attractive rate for the parents, but it's also not something that's hard on our taxpayers, because these parents are paying for it. Our before and after care programs, and this puts money back in the budget. You know, I, so I hesitate to say where we would cut, because I truly don't believe there is any place to cut. We run a very lean budget. We've always tried to stay under the cap. And honestly, as I said, there's areas where we need to spend more. So, again, I'm gonna go with, I don't really feel we can cut. I think that we have to focus more on ways to fund so that we don't have to lose staff, we don't have to lose programs. You know, and we have a friend in the mayor's office now. You know, Mayor Cohen was on the Board of Education and he's very well aware of how wonderful this district is and the financial challenges we face. And so, one of the things we've tried to do is to work with him and shared resources, lease purchase, different things like that. So, we're always looking for things and trying to be creative in ways to make sure that we're not having to cut any of the essentials out of our budget.
And then, in the next three or four years, what do you think the main focus of the Board of Education should be?
I think the main focus is to stay on the path that we're on, being mindful of things like security. Again, going back to our education versus our children. One of the things I'm very proud of is we have a security force in place in our schools that in today's day and age, unfortunately, is one of those necessities. But what's nice, again, is going back to the community field, is these people, these men and women are not just a security force. They're part of the schools. They are part of the children's lives. And it's really, it's been a very successful program, because quite honestly, we can't educate our children if they're not safe in our buildings. So, security has always been very near and dear to my heart. Technology, we need to stay cutting edge and constantly look to make sure that our kids are on the curve as they go up with that. We're always looking to maintain our class sizes. Our staff development is very important. So, I say we still focus on making sure that we attract and keep the best of the best and make sure that we're giving them the tools they need.
In the short time that we have left, is there anything else that you'd like to add, that you'd want the voters to know about you?
Sure, just as I said, that I've enjoyed doing this. And actually, I'm just gonna go back, I did forget, you know, how good I am on camera. One other thing I wanted to just mention was our Pathways Program. Because as I said, since we have this responsibility to all the residents of this town, and especially for the children, one of the things that we've done recently is our Pathways Program, it's a partnership with Middlesex County College, where what's happening now is students are actually taking college-level courses and it's in tandem with their high school classes, they're dual courses, and these children are earning college credits. So, when you look at the cost of college today, when Rutgers is, I believe, over $30,000, and their private schools are double the cost, we're now affording these parents and these children the ability to graduate with anywhere from a semester to a two-year, an associate's degree. So, these are some of the things that I feel very comfortable with, that we've done to try and ease some of the tax burden. Because as I said, as a Board of Education member, you're always looking out for the needs of the children and their parents. But, you know, if people can't afford to live in this town, then we can have the most wonderful school system, but really, you know, if they're leaving, then it does nobody any good. So, I'm always very cognizant of that. As I said, growing up here, I'm seeing a lot of my parents and their friends moving, you know, into other towns bordering here. And so, I always wanna make sure that the voters know that I am looking out for their best interest. I truly enjoy being your advocate and being a part of this Board of Education and I hope to do so for another three years.
Thank you so much for your time Lori, it's always a pleasure.
Thank you Lindsay, I appreciate you having me here.
Joining me now is Susannah Chu. Welcome Susannah, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you Lindsay, happy to be here.
Let's begin with you telling us a little bit about yourself. A bit about how long you've been a resident in town, your occupation, a little bit about your educational background and your family and children.
Okay, great. I've been living in East Brunswick for over 20 years with my husband, Joe. We have two children, a 24-year-old and a 20-year-old. Both of our children attended East Brunswick Public Schools from kindergarten, starting with central school, all the way up through the high school. As for myself, I went to, I attended public schools in Elizabeth and, so, you know, I really value having had that public school education. I went to NJIT for my bachelor's and master's. I currently work at Public Service Electric and Gas Company and I run their energy efficiency program, so I help customers to save energy.
Excellent. And can you tell us why you've decided to run for reelection?
Well, you know, so I'm a relative newcomer. I've served one term and I found it to be a really valuable experience. And, you know, my parents didn't have a college education. They didn't even have, basically, they just had elementary level education in China. So, when we immigrated to this country, you know, it was really emphasized as this is a great thing. We have a great benefit and a gift that's available to us. So, just having the opportunity to participate in the public education process, I just wanna be able to give back.
So, what experience or talents or special skills do you think that you have that become an asset to the Board of Education?
So, I've had a pretty long career at PSENG. I started out in computer programming and have held diverse number of jobs, including strategic planning, business planning, customer service. I've built solar farms, you know, and now I'm helping save energy. So, what that's really taught me along the way is, you know, there's always someone who knows more than you. And so, it teaches you really to listen and to learn. And in everything you do is to really value the people around you and to value the team. So, I think that that's something that I bring to the Board, is that base of experience and that perspective of really valuing all the people around me and the expertise. You know, and kind of, doesn't mean you listen to everything that people tell you, but, you know, you filter that through your own analysis and then you come up with, you know, the direction that we need to take. As well, in the community, I've done, you know, I've worked in a lot of nonprofit areas with Literacy New Jersey years ago as the president. And in more recent years, before I joined the Board of Ed, you know, with the Chinese Schools and the Chinese American Cultural Association. And one thing in common, working for nonprofit, is working with limited funds. And that really teaches you a lot about, you know, understanding how to leverage resources and how to stretch everything that you have and to leverage people and the expertise around you again. So, it's really all about people. And, you know, really, when you look at what the public school system is about, it's about, it's a people business. And that's where I think, you know, I can really bring my experiences working with people.
And if you were to give the district a report card, what do you think would receive the highest grades and why?
Well, there's really so much to give high grades on. So, you know, I really love the phrase, it sums it up well, right? Academics, athletics, and the arts. And I think that it's important to keep a balanced perspective on all three. You know, even in my own education in the past, you know, having been in theater and having had the opportunity to participate in chorus, and then, you know, balancing that with academics, that is important in the overall experience. So, you can't really pick one thing and say you need to be great at it. So, I really, you know, like our motto and I feel that we really do live by it. And I think, you know, 11 blue ribbon schools doesn't happen by accident. I think we have an outstanding staff, we have an outstanding Board, as, you know, still, as I said, a relatively new member of the Board. I've really appreciated the experience and the diversity of the thought and approach that the Board members bring. And I think that that's what's created a good holistic approach to, you know, being successful in a lot of areas.
And in your opinion, are there other areas that need work that wouldn't necessarily receive an A mark?
Well, I think there's something that you never wanna rest on your laurels on and there's a couple of areas that are constantly changing. One is technology. And if I think about, you know, I ran punch cards in college, you know, so that takes you a while back, to, you know, what technology is today. And the other area that I think we have to always stay focused on is just, you know, this is a global economy. So, what do we have to do to make sure that we keep our eyes open, to make sure that our curriculum, our approach, you know, millennials don't think the same way as, you know, kids from a decade ago? So, just making sure that we keep up to date with the changes.
Which then leads me to my next question. In this tight budget climate, how would you decide on what areas we would need to fund or cut?
It goes back to the point I made earlier about listening. So, a couple of years ago, the Board went through a strategic planning process and I was really pleased with how that went. The Board put a lot of thought and effort into, you know, how do we do this? I mean, one way we could do this is sit in a conference room and just decide. And that's, you know, one way to do it. But, the way we did approach it is that we opened it up to the community. Community members, students, parents, staff members, and brought everyone in and gave them an opportunity to identify, you know, what are the things that are in their mind? What's happening that's working and what's happening that isn't working so well? And we took all of that and turned that into a strategic plan that I think, you know, sets some guideposts for the next couple of years. And that needs to be continually refreshed.
And then, if I could ask you about what you think the focus of the Board should be over the next three or four years? Could you tell us a little bit about that?
You know, I think the focus of the Board ties back to the strategic plan, is continuing to execute on the priority items that were identified by the input, the broad input that we received. And so, some of the things that we've already executed, you know, changes to additions to curriculum, adding more clubs back, you know, adding, you know, various levels of sports. You know, all of these things, you know, set us on a path. And then, in the next year or so, you know, looking at reviewing the curriculum for science and for math and across the board, is never sitting there and saying, "Hey, we're great." You know, "We're in the top whatever." And just constantly reevaluating and looking for how we can get better. So, those are the things we need to keep looking at, as well as continuing to also make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our students, not just the students that are top academically. So, you know, I'm really proud of the fact that as a school district, we're very well-known for special education. And I think that another example of a new program that was rolled out that shows that, you know, we're looking at different options for students is the Pathways Program with Middlesex County College. Now, when my kids went to school, they received some college credits with Middlesex County and I was like, "Wow, this is awesome." And, you know, at first I was like, "What is this?" You know, I didn't understand it. How can you get college credits in school? And now, the school district has taken it to a whole nother level and added so many more options that students can take advantage of. I wish my kids, well, I don't think they wish they could go do school over again, but I kinda wish they could, because there's so many more options available to them.
It is a terrific program and I see each and every year, they're adding more and more classes. In the short time that we have remaining, is there anything else that you'd want the voters to know about you?
You know, I do wanna say, I'm really proud of having had the opportunity to do as many things that I've done, but I have really been honored to have the opportunity to serve the community in this capacity in the first term. I've really learned a lot. And I would love the opportunity to build on what I've learned. You really can't affect change. You know, in the first term, you're learning a lot. You know, served on a lot of different committees, you know, listening and absorbing it all. And, you know, through it all, all of the fellow Board members who I've learned from. You know, it's really just a building block and I'd love the opportunity to continue learning and contributing.
That's terrific. Thank you so much for spending some time with us this evening and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you Lindsay.
Joining us now on the program is Jean Rieger. Welcome Jean, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Our pleasure. Let's begin with you telling us a little bit about yourself. How long you've been a resident in town? A little bit about your educational background and something about your family.
Well, okay, my family moved out here in 2007, so I was in third grade. Like most people who move here because of the schools. I'm going to Middlesex right now, I'm majoring in political science. I plan on transferring to Rutgers afterward and eventually going to law school. I graduated from East Brunswick in 2016, I'm 19. So, yeah.
Excellent. And can you tell us why you've decided to run for the Board of Education?
Well, it all started really junior year. I have always wanted to make a difference. But recently, I was inspired when Betsy DeVos was sworn in as Secretary of Education. And I don't wanna just sit idly by and let this administration just happen to me. I wanted to get up and do something about it. And on a local level is where we feel the most change. And I just wanna be a part of it, I wanna serve the community. I wanna protect the East Brunswick School District from a federal government that doesn't seem to really care about public education at the moment.
And can you let us know a little bit about what experience or special talents that you have and you bring to the Board of Education that make you different than somebody else?
Well, I'm a creative thinker, public speaking, I'm pretty organized. But my main advantage is, I graduated in 2016. I know the students, I know the teachers especially. I've been through the lockdown drills. I could really relate to the students, you know, as a student myself. So, I feel like the Board could really benefit from my perspective on the issues.
Okay. And as an outsider, can you tell us, if you were to give the district a report card, what areas would receive the highest marks and why?
Well, the performing arts, I'd say would definitely get an A. Special education, especially like A-plus. On the other end of the spectrum, I think the Board's been doing a great job. You know, the East Brunswick District is everything. But I guess, on the lower end, I think that we could be focusing more on mental health. That's actually like a huge component of my campaign. I think we could be doing a lot more for like student well-being and, you know, making sure that students are happy. And mental health is just the key to student success, in my opinion.
That's a huge issue, can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, okay, I think the district did a great job providing accommodations. I needed accommodations in terms of, by ADHD, I had to, you know, just learn a little differently. And it was simple things, like not using Scantrons for tests and having a little more time for assignments. But I think we could be doing more in terms of counseling. Student assistance counselors are really wonderful. Like you could be in crisis mode and just go see one and they'll talk to you for as long as necessary. And they're great people, but I think we need more of them. You know, there's two in the high school and there's two in Churchill. I think we could be using more. And also, certain mental health situations, I think, could be handled better. I have a friend who was having a panic attack and had to go home, but she was marked with an unexcused absence. And I think we could be a little more sympathetic to people in distress.
Okay. And then, if we turn our focus on to the budget, what areas do you think we'd be able to cut in this tight budget climate and why?
Well, first of all, I would try my best not to have to cut anything, but, you know, that's almost inevitable. I think there's a bit of waste in the athletics department. But really, I think that the distribution of money is pretty good. There also is waste within the schools, like, for example, the high school cafeteria has a bunch of plasma screen TVs and nobody watches them. You know, I feel like if we were to pay more attention to what the students use and what they care about, I feel like we could move money in a better direction and not be as wasteful.
Which leads me to my next question. What do you think the focus of the Board should be in the next three or four years?
Being more in touch with the students. I feel like they've been doing a great job, but sometimes they kind of do miss the mark and it's because they don't have enough of a student's perspective on the issues, you know? Certain things like the dress code. What they don't understand is that it's extremely sexist, you know? Have they ever actually been in a lockdown drill? You know, I don't think they're actually really in touch with the students. So, I feel like student feedback and having teachers be more involved too. I was, I've been speaking to my former teachers and they all said that teachers don't really get enough of a say on the issues. So, I feel like they should definitely have more of a seat at the table.
Okay. And in the time that we have remaining, is there anything else that you want the voters to know about Jean Rieger?
Well, elephant in the room, I am 19 years old. People might be reluctant about voting for a teenager, but I know the issues that matter to the students and the teachers. And I feel like the Board could definitely benefit from my perspective. So, yeah.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you joining us this evening and I wish you the best of luck. I appreciate you joining us this evening, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much for having me. It was nice to meet you.
Joining me now on the program is Todd Simmons. Welcome, Todd, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thanks for having me, Lindsay.
Let's begin with you telling us a little bit about yourself, something about how long you've been a resident, your occupation, some educational background, and family and children.
Sure. Well, my wife, Michelle, and I moved to East Brunswick about 16 years ago. Our son, Alex, is a senior. Our daughter, Ella, is in seventh grade, and our daughter, Lily, is in fourth grade at Central. Now, I'm a lawyer and a CPA with BDO USA. It's a global accounting firm. Went to Drexel University for my undergraduate degree in accounting, to what is now Penn State Law School for my law degree, and then did graduate legal work in tax at Georgetown Law Center.
Very good. And can you tell us why you've decided to run for reelection?
Sure. I feel that I've made some strong contributions during my time on the board, and I want to see more kids succeed in our district. We have undertaken a new strategic plan, and last year, the community had given us direction on some of the initiatives they'd like us to undertake. We have developed goals around those initiatives. The superintendent and the board have been working on meeting those. And so, you know, it's a great opportunity to continue doing the work that the community has told us they want us to do.
Excellent. And if you were to give the district a report card, what would receive the As and why?
I think our staff, and staff at all levels, our teaching staff, our support staff, our administrators, they would get top scores. They are the folks that pull it all together for our kids. They're the ones that our kids and our parents remember after the school year's over, years down, the road, I think they're the ones that you really do remember. I would also give our curriculum top scores. I think we do a great job in making sure that, for example, at the elementary level, we transition from each grade pretty well. When you start, for example, third grade from second, you've got a really great running start in terms of transition. At the high school, it's a little bit different. At the high school, it's more about content and the kinds of courses you're taking, they're all different, but I think we do a great job with respect to that. If I were looking at some things that we could improve in shaping a report card, I think our technology equipment could use some improvement. We have great technology in some places. For example, if you look at the high school, there are certain courses where we've got great technology because we have to. Some of our art programs, some of our graphic design programs, our music programs, need certain technology, and we have it. In our classrooms, we have smart boards. Thankfully, because of PTA and East Brunswick Education Foundation grants, we're able to fill those holes, things we could not do with our operating budget. So, but I would still say that we have some ways to go. I would also talk about the way we administer park testing. And I think that's more of a state issue than it probably is a district issue, but it is a source of frustration for a lot of folks. It takes a lot of classroom time away from our kids, it takes a lot of teaching instructional time away from our staff, and that is something that I would really like to see a little workaround, if we can.
Okay. And you mentioned the budget, and in this tight climate, how would you determine what things to fund and what things to cut?
We don't really have the luxury of a lot of new initiatives. With funding the way that it is, and I'm talking about state funding, and also really trying not to squeeze folks with property tax increases, it really becomes more of a what can we maintain year after year? So, when we put the budget together, one of the first questions that board members ask is, are we losing things that we really care about? So, it's really very much a maintenance issue. One thing I'd want to make sure we don't depart from is keeping a decent class size. I want to make sure class size remains manageable, both for students from a learning perspective and for our staff from an instructional perspective. If class size gets too large, it can become a little bit unworkable for everybody. So, I want to see if we can at least maintain the good class size that we've had so far. Our buildings are aging. That's not a surprise. If you live here for 16 years even, you can see that. So, we have some repair work we have to tend to, and there's things that we can't get out of. So, we have to make sure we have safe, comfortable buildings for our students and staff. One area that I think has gotten cut more over the years is athletics. Our athletic supervisor develops budgets for us that come in either flat or with reductions year after year. Now, you start to see that. It begins to wear. For example, you look at uniforms, and they're a little bit dated. Our equipment isn't quite what it ought to be, but when a supervisor comes in with a reduction in a budget, you tend to let it go. You don't want to press for that. You're kind of pleased that they think that they can continue to maintain programming at that level, but at some point, we're going to have to begin to address some of those things, I think.
I think the burden falls on those booster clubs. Am I right?
Absolutely. Exactly. Booster clubs, just like our PTAs and the foundation, are filling holes that we just can't. That's right.
And in your opinion, what do you think the focus of the board should be in the next, say, three or four years?
I think there's a few areas. First of all, I would say that we have to continue to work on the priorities that the community gave us last year. We have to continue to shape some goals and objectives from the things that our community wanted. When we collected the data from our community, we sort of plotted it out and could see common areas where the community was interested in change, and we have been working toward that since.
And can you elaborate on what those areas may be?
Well, one thing we look at is, well, start times are a big issue. It's difficult to flip them unless the rest of the state goes that direction. But one thing I think we can look at is perhaps more manageable times. We may not be able to flip start times, but we can certainly take a look at the clock and see what we can do. World Language, we have expanded our world language offerings. We now offer Chinese, in large part because the community asked for it. We have bolstered our other programs in Italian, German, Spanish, and French, again, because the community asked for it. We now have an entirely new German class. We are continuing to add things in Italian, French, and Spanish, such as business classes, medicine classes, things of that nature. So, you know, we are responding as best we can. We've also brought world language back to the elementary schools. Folks asked for that, too. So, we are really trying to take some of the advice that we were given and really put it to work. A couple of other things I would also look at. Advocacy. We are going to have a new administration in January in Trenton, no matter what, so we want to try to get a sense of what the priorities are going to be for the new administration. I personally would love an opportunity to talk about a new kind of maybe state testing regime, if that's a possibility. Like to get an idea of where the new governor and the administration would come in in terms of a regulatory environment. Would not mind looking at charter school rules, rules that really talk about charter schools and places that need them most. And I think the final thing I would look at is making sure that our performance is what it needs to be as a district. We have periodic monitoring from the state. Because our scores have been so high of late, we get breaks from when they come in. We get sort of a pass. Want to make sure we continue to do that.
We don't want to get complacent, correct?
No, definitely not.
And in the short time that we have remaining, is there anything else that you want to add or that you want the voters to know about Todd Simmons?
Well, I really enjoy serving on the board. I think that there is a learning curve, and one of the great things about serving on the board is you do learn about all the different areas of education because you have to. We have an incredible district. It is very well-run by our administration. Our teachers are the most dedicated in the state, and I really enjoy doing this and hope that I can continue to do so for our district.
Well, I appreciate you joining me on the program, and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thanks, Lindsay. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Joining me now is John Gonzalez. Welcome, John, and thank you for joining us on the program.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Let's begin with you telling us a little bit about yourself. How long have you been a resident? A little bit about your occupation, maybe some educational background, and family and children.
Sure. So, my family moved to East Brunswick in 2011, so we've been here about six and a half years. You know, and I'm actually a graduate of Rutgers. Rutgers in New Brunswick graduated in 2000, and always loved the area. My wife's a nurse at Robert Wood Johnson, so again, making her commute to work a lot closer, and I chose to make the longer commute for her benefit. We do have a son, eight and a half years old, in the third grade at Chittick Elementary, and we're actually expecting any day now.
Oh, congratulations.
Number two. Yes, we have. Thank you. Thank you. We have a little girl on the way, so we've completed the pair.
There you go. One of each.
Yes, one of each, one of each, just as we planned, eight and a half years apart, too. And you know what? Listen, I love being a part of the community. I love the community field of East Brunswick. I'm a member of two boards. I'm a member of the East Brunswick Baseball League Board and St. Bart's Buffalo's Football and Cheer. You know, so like, as I said, I mean, we love the community, I want to be a part of the community and continue to serve in any way I possibly could.
Well, you jumped the gun. I was going to ask you why you decided to run for the Board of Education here in East Brunswick?
Well, that's actually only one reason. Like I said, I love to be involved with the community, being a member of both boards, you know, also being an educator by trade. I'm now a school administrator at a state-approved private school for students with disabilities in Carteret. I've been there. I'm now entering my second year there. I'm a special educator by trade. As I say, graduated Rutgers University and New Jersey City University. So, running the board for me, running for the board just makes sense to me. You know, being an educator and a resident, I want to be involved and become a little bit more familiar with what the goings-on is in our district. And East Brunswick School District is phenomenal, doing a great job. So, I commend the people that are doing that. But like I said, I would love to be a part of that. I would love to provide my expertise and be a part of the conversations that we need to have in order to take our district to the next level. And also, you know what, as great as our schools are, my son, who is a student with disabilities, he's on the autistic spectrum, and East Brunswick Schools has done a tremendous job with him. But I will say, just last year, when he was in the second grade, we did hit a little bit of a wall where they wanted, he was having some difficulties, and they wanted to go a different direction with him. And, you know, thankfully, me being an educator and a special educator in particular, you know, I had that experience, and I was able to be a participant, an active participant in writing his program. And I'm sure plenty of parents, other parents are able to do so, but I guess my experience really, you know, touched myself, where I'm just wondering how many parents don't have the educational background, and as much as they love their children and they want what's best for them, you know, may not have that firsthand experience to really be a part of, you know, writing a program when their child's, when their children's having difficulty. And it wasn't contentious at all, but I did disagree with my child's team, with my son's team. And ultimately, you know, I actually guided them in a different direction, and I did push them to go in that direction. Thankfully, they tried what I was suggesting, and actually, since then, my son has excelled, to the point where actually this September, he entered a general education classroom with even fewer, even less support than he's had in the past. And, you know, I do thank the team, and I thank everyone that's worked with him, and I hope that I can do that, continue to do that, not only for my son, but for others.
That's terrific. Glad to hear that.
Well, thank you.
So, segueing into that whole experience, special talents, assets, other than the background that you have in the special education, what else do you think you can bring to the Board of Education?
Well, I think my professional background is interesting. I completed my undergraduate degree. I got my bachelor's of science in business management from Rutgers. So, prior to entering education, I did work in the private sector. I worked in the customer service field for a number of years before going into education. And I always tell people how, although it was just a couple of years before I entered education, that experience is so valuable when we're working with the public, families, students, and so forth. Also, I think what that provides me is, I tell people all the time, educators go to school for education, to run schools, to teach, to, you know, work on curriculum and programming and things like that. Educators don't go to school to necessarily run the business end of a school. And I think my business background helps me see that, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to get into administration. So, again, coming on to the board, I think my educational expertise and my business expertise allows me to look at education from a different aspect, where I do understand the, you know, the financial implications, the budget constraints, and things like that.
In the tight budget climate, how would you decide what programs to fund and which ones to cut?
Well, first off, you know what, you know, being a new member of the board, I know there's going to be a learning curve. There's going to be a, I'm going to have to educate myself as to, you know, where has the funding gone? You know, are there some programs that we continue to fund year after year and then continue to cut in certain areas? I think we can do, we can run some needs assessments, not only within the district, but hopefully with, you know, with our community members as well. We would love the residents and the public to tell us, where do you think we need, what areas do you think we need to focus on? Where should we put our money? And then, if we can, if we can take all that information along with the superintendent and the rest of the board that's running the district, hopefully, we can collaborate and, you know, best provide and best speak for our community. You know, if we're going to continue to excel in arts, academics, and athletics, we need to make sure that we're going to make a commitment to all three, so we can't neglect any one area, you know, if we're going to continue to live up to that expectation.
Okay. And if you were to give the district a report card, what areas would you give them the highest marks and why?
Well, listen, East Brunswick Public Schools has been doing a tremendous job. I mean, we are, you know, tops in the state, you know, top 10 in this, in this, in this survey, and top 50 in another, but, you know, that puts us up in the top 10 to 15% in the state of New Jersey in whatever survey you want to conduct or look at. Performance, first of all, I mean, when you look at the numbers and the number of our students that are graduating on time, going on to four-year colleges, completing high school, completing high school with college credits, taking AP classes and doing well, I mean, with the expense, with the expense in which college places on families now, the fact that our students can get a leg up on college by having credits going into their first year is a tremendous accomplishment, and we're doing it. And hopefully, those numbers can continue to increase, and year by year, even more students are benefiting from that. You know, so that would be the, that would be the highest grade I would give our public schools. One thing I think we're lacking is, I think we're lacking in facilities. As well as our schools are doing, I would love to see our, each of our schools to be state-of-the-art, up-to-date, you know, just wonderful facilities that you open the door, and you know that great learning, it's exciting to enter, you know, to enter. And being a part of these other organizations throughout East Brunswick, and my son actually having been a student at three elementary schools. He started his preschool program in kindergarten at Memorial, no, I'm sorry, preschool at Memorial. He did kindergarten at Central, and now he's in first, second, and now third grade at Chittick. You know, I've gotten to see him. Memorial is a beautiful school and a beautiful campus. Central, another beautiful school and beautiful campus. And then we have Chittick. You know, Chittick, they do a phenomenal job. It's a wonderful school. They're accommodating our students. I wish our buildings, I wish our buildings matched the effort and the performance that we're putting out. My son being, having played basketball in the second grade for a fast-break part of the rec program, we used Warrensdorf. Warrensdorf is another one. It's a building that we need, that's in dire need of renovation. You know, our high school, our high school, it's a beautiful sprawling campus. I don't know if the physical structure really, really matches what they're putting out, and I would think that, you know, one of the things we really need to focus on over whatever next period of time, and I understand it's going to be, it's going to be a huge financial investment, but I do think our facilities need to match what we're putting out performance-wise.
Okay. And speaking of focus, that's my next question. In the next three years, as you, if you were to be elected, what would be your focus moving forward on the Board of Education?
Well, you know what? I mean, there's a number of committees that I think I can lend my expertise to, you know, curriculum. But again, I mean, performance-wise, our schools are doing very well, so it may not be where I need, a place where I may be needed right away. Speaking of facilities, again, I mean, not only our buildings, but also our grounds. You know, also community programs, another place where I'd really like to, you know, educate myself about. What I, I really want to see where, you know, what our schools are providing and what our rec programs are providing, and seeing if there's enough collaboration. Again, I'd have to educate myself and see exactly how we are collaborating thus far, and see if there are ways in which we can improve. You know, I don't think we should be duplicating efforts whenever possible. But also, you know, on the issue of grounds, I mean, where our students in the community are playing outside, I mean, I go, I go out there, and I'm going to sound a little selfish here, because I am being involved in our baseball league and our football league, but sometimes when our, when our local teams, who are the students of our schools, when they go out and we want to use a ball field or something on the schools, I mean, these ball fields are in terrible shape. They're just, again, I don't think they're, I don't think we're matching what we're putting out performance, performance-wise. I would love us to be, you know, top-notch in every area, whether it be grounds, facilities, school, education. school, education performance, our teachers, our students, colleges, everything. You know, I mean, that's what we all want. We all want for us to be the best in all areas.
And in the few minutes that we have remaining, is there anything else that you want the voters to know about John Gonzalez?
Well, they can reach out to me. You know what? In the coming weeks, they're going to see, you know, my signs will go up. I have my Facebook page. I have an email, an email address. If they have any questions and want to know more about where I stand on certain issues and certain areas, they can email me at jgforебboe@gmail.com. And one thing I would encourage everyone to do is educate themselves. Educate themselves about the issues. Educate themselves about who our candidates are. You know, another reason I didn't speak of earlier as to why I wanted to run is, you know what? A lot of, a lot of my friends that we've made in town, a lot of my neighbors, you know, it's going to sound a little funny, but I asked them, I said, do you know who the Board members are in East Brunswick? A lot of people don't know. They don't know. And, you know, I think we should. You know, I think most people, if not everyone, that's moved into East Brunswick moved here because, one of the reasons they moved here is because of the phenomenal school system. Those of us who have families and young children, that's one of the things that we're looking for. We're looking for good schools. If we're going to continue that, then I think we need to know who are the people that are involved, you know, not only on our public, the elected officials, but also what about the hired officials, you know? Know our superintendent. And I think, I think Dr. Velasquez does a wonderful job of getting him out there. And we get all of his, all of those voicemails and some of them are funny and he does, he does a great job. And I'm sure he would agree, you know, because I'm sure he's someone who's out there who, he wants to be known. He's not, you know, he's out there.
He's not shy.
Yeah, he's not. And, but, but like I said, I think the community, the public, they should know, they should know who we are. They should know who we are.